Okay, it looks like we are now streaming, so we can get started. Welcome everyone to Santaquin City Planning Commission. Meeting on Tuesday, February 23rd and we're getting started at 7:00 PM. Would anyone like to get us started with an invocation or a thought?
I'll give a prayer then.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity to meet as the planning commission or grateful for the community that we reside. And for the blessings we have of being able to serve and work together. We're grateful for the moisture that we've received to help our snowpack. Pray that we might receive additional moisture to help out our community. And help us to make correct decisions this evening in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Would anyone like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight? I'm looking at you, Jason, since you usually have the flag ready.
Yeah, I'll do it. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Guys. Please repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay. Tonight on the agenda. We have. Three possible items for discussion and possible action. First is a public hearing. And discussion regarding some middle requirements for development applications. After that, we'll move on to the Salisbury masquerading permit renewal. And then we will discuss the proposed parking reduction for driving restaurants. And we'll wrap up the meeting at the end with other business, including approval of the minutes from our last meeting on February 9th. So. With that. Let's go back to the top and start at the forum. Did we have anyone submit any comments for the public forum, which I'm opening by the way at 7:00?
Yeah, we did. We have one comment.
Okay.
So this is in regards to the Salisbury masquerading permit extension. Salisbury is doing a terrible job of keeping the public roads free of dirt, boulders, debris and airborne dust in the Summit Ridge Hills location. The dump trucks and the equipment traffic are ruining our public roads and filling our drainage systems with debris. How about as part of the permit, they be required to sweep a minimum of once per day with a pickup room, not a shoulder room that sweeps the debris into the sidewalk and also to fulfill their SWIP obligations. I've spoken with the onsite SWIP inspector several times. He mentions these infractions to Salisbury all the time, but they tend to ignore him because they are, there are no penalties attached to the infractions due to Santaquin. And the state not requiring a SWIP permit. I have several pictures for documentation that I've shared with Norm Beagle. They include pictures of airborne dust, boulders on the public roads, BMPs removed from city drainage, mud and dirt on the public roads. Heavy equipment driving on public roads, equipment filling up at fire hydrants without gate valves and. And poor or no traffic control while working in the city right away. Please let me know if you need these pictures for the record. As part of the mass grading permit extension, I would like to see Salisbury held accountable for my address concerns respectfully, Jared Jeffs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jeffs. And you said that was the only comment. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. We will go ahead then and close the public forum at 7:04. And we'll move on to agenda item one. This is regarding some middle requirements for development applications.
Hey, so let me share this screen with you. So on the screen there is, is a memo that I prepared describing this, this proposal. Let me zoom in a little bit so you can see it better. So essentially what this proposal is, is, is. As you all know, Santaquin's growing at a pretty, pretty crazy rate right now, and we're experiencing a lot of growth. And a lot of development applications and, and things related to that. Our, our policy in our, in our department. Has been that applicants give us. The submitted requirements or the, the required. Application and, and submittals seven days prior to the meeting that they're looking to. So if they want to be on a DRC. Meeting with a concept plan, they need to get us those plans seven days prior so that staff has time to review those plans. As because things are so busy, it's harder and harder for us to, to thoroughly review those, those plans and to. To work through that. So. We've looked in the code and, and we would like to, and we're proposing an amendment to that code. That would create a 14 day submission requirement. So as you can see on the screen, it would basically just be adding language. And it would read complete applications or resubmittals for development proposals shall be submitted at least 14 days prior to the applicable public meeting. The community development director and city engineer may recommend that an application or resubmit will be on the agenda earlier than 14 days. If they find that the submitted materials are ready for review by a public body. So this, the reason for the second sentence there is, is we do our best to try and work with, with applicants and developers on, on helping them move through the process. And so then there's times where if it's a resubmittal and it's, it's a pretty. Straightforward change. We're happy to facilitate them moving through the process. So we wanted to have that flexibility to, to do that. However, the, the, the line in the sand, if you will. For 95% of the time will be the 14 day requirement so that we have sufficient time to review applications and, and to. Prepare memos and recommendations for, for the DRC, for the planning commission, for, for city council. So. This is the, the proposed amended amendment to this, this code and this, this is the proposed language and. We're asking for the, the planning commission and city council to, to consider making this change. I guess the last thing I'll say on this is, is the previous community I worked for, and it's my understanding that a 14 day submittal requirement. Is very common amongst other cities. So this is not, this is not something that's out of the ordinary. This is actually falling in line with what most other cities do anyways. The only outlier that I know of is, is Provo actually has a, a really. Long submittal requirement. It, it's, it can take like. I'm not sure exactly sure what it is, but I've, I've, I've heard that it's, it's almost like a month. That the people need to submit plans in order for them to be on an upcoming meeting. So. Yeah, our intentions are to, to give us more time to be thorough in, in the work that we do and, and the memos and stuff that we prepare for the different public bodies. So. Yeah, I think that, that's, that's sufficient for an introduction and, and obviously this is a public hearing and. We're happy to answer any questions or. Concerns that you may have.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, let's go ahead and take care of the public hearing at this time. So open the public hearing at 7:08. Did we have any comments submitted for the public hearing?
We did not.
That's surprising. That was a joke. Although I'm sure you got that. Okay, so let's close the public hearing then at 7:08 and. We will move into discussion. I think this sounds perfectly reasonable. I don't have any concerns about it. Commissioners, any questions or concerns?
I second that.
Only question I had Jason answered when he acknowledged that we're in line with other cities. So I'd be in favor of this.
And I haven't done an assessment on that. Just, just my understanding, you know, previous community I worked for, we had a 14 day deadline. And it's my understanding that a lot of other communities have that deadline. It, it makes sense because. For instance, if it's, if it's the very beginning of the process and the required to have a public hearing. We need to have that public hearing notice 10 days prior to the meeting. So having it submitted 14 days prior. That gives us time to, to organize notification letters if we need to set public hearings. And so. A lot of times people need to submit stuff early in order to get on a meeting, but this will fall more in line with some of those ancillary requirements that need to be met in preparation for them moving through the process.
I think it looks great. You think two weeks is enough? This is legislative, right?
This is, so this would be a recommendation from the planning commission and the council would consider. The, the ordinance or the, the code amendment by ordinance.
So are we ready for a motion?
We are ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the extension of the submission, submission requirement to 14 days prior to a public meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a? Okay, we have a second. Let's vote. Commissioner Wood, I, Commissioner Adcock.
I.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I.
Commissioner Nixon.
I.
Commissioner Lance.
I.
Okay, that recommendation is, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Okay, let's move on to agenda item two. The, this is discussion on the Salisbury grading permit renewal.
All right, so we have Sean Herring who's joining us. He is. An engineer for region engineering. He is representing the Salisbury development. And they are the applicant who are requesting. A renewal of their, their mask grading conditional use permit. This is the work that has been happening south end of Summit Ridge for the last couple of years. And they, as you, as you well know, there's a lot of houses that have been built on there. And they still have a little bit more work to do so that they can, you know, continue the future phases of the hills at Summit Ridge. So for, for this particular. For, for renewal of such a permit. The planning commission and the council review their application and, and, and see. What, what, what they've been doing on the property and how they're progressing and what still needs to be done. It also requires that, that myself and the city engineer do a site visit and, and look over the progress of, of their, their, their project. I should also mention. John Lindell, who the city is the city engineer, he is, is, is available. We probably give him a call if you have questions for him. And so he, he has made himself available so that he can call in if, if, if needed. We also have Norm Beagle who, who could chime in and will be able to, to help. Address any questions that you have. And then of course we have Sean Herring who is, is representing the. Representing Salisbury Development who's doing, doing the work out there. So. So yeah. You've, you've been provided the memo from, from John Lundell and, and I guess I would turn it over to you if you have any questions about this, this particular. Renewal proposal.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that introduction. Since Mr. Herring's here, I would just ask him if he had anything he wanted to add to that presentation.
No, you know, we're just looking forward to getting on to the next phases of the project and, and moving on with the rest of Summer Ridge. So. I'm here really, if you guys have any questions or anything that needs cleared out.
Okay, thank you for that. So we had a couple of questions that came up. During the work session when we were discussing this before the official meeting started. One of the questions, and this is one probably for staff and maybe for engineering was related to. The road maintenance section of the code. As I read the code, it requires a 40 foot section of pavement. Where entrance and exit to the grading operation. Are happening and it was indicated in the staff memo that there is no such section of pavement. And so I just wanted to ask that question again. I think that's probably primarily for staff and maybe for engineering. Is that required by the code? Am I reading that correctly?
So Trevor, this is normal answer that that is required by the code. And that is one of our comments that they will have to fulfill. Should they have different trucking routes than what they already have right now? We're, we're kind of unsure actually on where that's going to be. The majority of the mass grading is going to stay on site. So cuts and fills will stay on site mostly. They will be accessing the roads minimally if I'm correct on that. Is that right, Sean?
That's correct.
And so wherever they access a public street, that's where this 40 foot of asphalt applies wherever they end up with their haul route. And enter onto a public street that will be required. It's just unsure where that will be right now. And so that's why it's in the staff memo.
Okay, and.
Required to have that, yes.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up. And I wanted to ask about that because I noticed there was a recommended condition. About a modification to the haul route and I wasn't sure on the details on that. Can you? Provide any more light on that? Is it just that it's uncertain at this point? Or was there something that we, do we need them to modify it for a particular reason?
So that we've asked that as a comment on them to resubmit and, and show the actual haul routes that they're going to be using.
Okay, got it. Thank you for that. Okay, um, commissioners, other thoughts or concerns or questions?
Like to address the water line and the stability of it and ensuring that it stays that way.
Yes, we've addressed that with them as well. They will be potholing that water line before they drive over it or do any masquerading in the area. And they will also protect it by, by burming up more soil over the top of it, which creates a, a quasi-bridge, as it were, in the soil to be able to protect our water line. Yes, that's correct.
Kind of piggybacks with a two inch water meter.
Two inch water meter is already installed. It was installed by the previous. Work that was done and they will be using, I presume they will be using that water, right, Sean?
Right.
I guess lastly is the proximity to the now occupied homes.
So the proximity of that is by the homes is allowed. They, they will be, if I remember correctly, Sean. 30 to 50 feet away from any, any cutting. They will actually be bringing in special. Smaller equipment to be able to do that mass grading so that it does not disturb the homes next to it. And it, it is allowed by code.
And we're going to focus there first. We're going to get in and get that stuff that's closer to those homes and get that out of the way. Right away within that first four to six weeks is our plan on that.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, other thoughts or concerns?
I guess my concern is with the citizens if they're experiencing some debris in the road. Kind of messy situation, what the mitigation is for that.
So Kylie, the, the obviously no, no construction project is perfect and they do get some dirt and debris on the roads. Every time we see that or every time that happens or we're made aware of it by residents, we appreciate them helping to watch out for that because we can't be there all the time. And we, we instruct them and they do promptly clean that up. I think the, the comment by Mr. Jeffs would be appropriate to have some type of a sweeping mechanism that may be a little bit better than what they've had in the past. And I've spoken with the, with the developer and they are willing to do that. And so that could be a condition that we could apply tonight. If that's what the recommendation would be from the, from the planning commission to do that. I would point out one inaccuracy in Mr. Jeff's letter. We do, and the state does require SWIP permits. That's a, that's an acronym. I can go through the whole thing if you'd like, but it's essentially it's a stormwater permit. We do require that. They do have that in place. The state also requires that and puts that in place. I, I believe that Mr. Jeff's frustration probably as much the same as ours where we are not what the state designates as an MS4. It's a, it's a state stormwater designation. Quite frankly, we don't ever want to get there because it's very onerous, costly and time consuming. For the, for the residents as far as staff and equipment and et cetera. But because we are not an MS4, we don't have any regulatory authority to a fine or. Or anything like that. That's done through the state. It is our understanding that they have a SWIP company on staff. That directs them and helps them to, to recognize where there are infractions or could be infractions. And to clean that up. And we do understand that the state has been on site and done inspections. And, and does that with all of our sites in town. So just wanted to point that out.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, commissioners? Okay, if not, is anyone prepared to make a motion? I would note that in the staff memo, there were a number of. Conditions that were suggested and I think those are probably all appropriate. Including what Norm mentioned, which was that just to make sure that they stay on top of keeping the roads clean.
I'm happy to make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the city council with the conditions. That the applicant meet all of staff's recommendations, including. In addition to that sweeping. Adding a sweeping mechanism daily to ensure all debris and any mess is off of the public streets.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Nixon.
I.
Commissioner Lance.
I.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I.
Commissioner Adcock.
I.
Commissioner Wood, I. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that. And thank you, Mr. Herring for joining us tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it, everybody.
Okay, with that, let's move on to agenda item number three. This is the proposed parking reduction for drive-in restaurants. This one should be familiar as this is the third time we're looking at it. So. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to give this one some thought and we can move on with the recommendation on this one tonight. So did you have anything you wanted to say about that staff?
Yeah, sure. So we, we took the feedback that the planning commission gave us last time. I don't know if it's necessary to show, but. Staff did, did look at and I appreciate Ryan Harris's help to, to look at a, a number of different cities and what their, their parking requirements were. So we, we use that to kind of. To help us. Modify the language. In accordance with the, the suggestions that the planning commission had. So, and you can see the screen I'm sharing, right?
Yes.
So as you can see, we, we've taken out the language that was there before and basically turned it into for drive-in restaurants. The requirement be one space per four seats, including outdoor seating or. One space for 125 square feet of gross floor area, whichever is greater. In addition to that. As I looked at the other categories that were under the restaurant category for parking requirements. We had family restaurants and we had restaurants for dinner only. The, the requirement for, for family restaurants was one space for four seats and, and for dinner only restaurants was one space for two seats. I never quite understood the, the, why we had dinner only restaurants in there and, and, and one thing I did was I looked at the definitions we had in that, that section of code. And there's no definition for a dinner only restaurant. In fact, there's not even a definition for a family restaurant. There's only a definition for restaurants. So I think to be consistent with our definitions. And, and to, to not have two different requirements. I felt like it was, it was appropriate to clean that up as well and, and also to, to add some detail that, that. The requirement would be one space for four seats, including outdoor seating. Which obviously can, can add to, to. You know, add traffic that, that demands parking. So. These are the changes that we brought forward based on the, the comments that the planning commissioners gave to us and, and it's here for your consideration. And we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. Commissioners, questions or thoughts on the new proposed language?
I think it looks great. I like the square footage better than per seat. I like that the square footage is in there because each business is different depending on what it's doing. So it could have a drive-in, but it, they might have seating inside so we can go according to seats. But if they don't have seating inside, then I think the square footage really helps suit that and what kind of parking they would need. So I like that you've changed that.
Yeah, I agree.
I think this horse has been beaten. I think we're ready for a motion.
Unless there's any other concerns.
I'm not making another motion.
Fair enough. Does anyone else want to make a motion?
Well, Trevor.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, I motion to recommend approval of a code amendment which will reduce the minimum number of required parking stalls for a drive-in restaurant.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Wood, I, Commissioner Adcock.
Why?
Commissioner Hoffman.
I.
Commissioner Lance.
I.
Commissioner Nixon.
I.
Okay, motion passage. Very good. It's a good discussion. Indeed. Okay, um, well, with that, I think we're ready to move on to other business, which includes approval of the minutes from our last meeting on February 9th. Do we need to have any discussion about those minutes? And if not, would anyone like to make a motion?
We'll make that motion.
Okay, would anyone like to second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Let's vote on the minutes. Commissioner Wood, I, Commissioner Adcock.
I.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I.
Commissioner Lance.
I.
Commissioner Nixon.
I.
Okay, those minutes are approved unanimously. It's almost too quick tonight, you guys. Is there any other business we need to take care of in this meeting?
I'd like to hear from Jason about some rumored incoming businesses.
Well, uh, I don't know what, what rumors you're referring to. Obviously there's, there's some, uh, some things that, that, uh. Property owners and, and developers are working on that, that haven't been announced yet. But. Yeah, there's just a lot of growth in general and, and as, as Art mentioned, it's not just residential, but there's some, some commercial growth that's happening as well. The, uh, the pad site C for the, next to the Ridley's grocery store, I believe they did get a building permit and so. You could see some, something happening there in the near future. That'll have three tenants in it. And yeah, we're excited to see some, some, some of those pads be developed there closer to.
The one we're aware of.
What's that?
Is that the one we're aware of with a dentist office?
Yeah, so one of the tenants I believe is a, is a dentist and I think another, or. No, I don't know if that's been confirmed yet, but I think. Ones that like a salon, like a Great Clips and the other one I think is the, like a Little Caesar's. So. Yeah, that's, that's, I think that third tenant has not been, been decided on for sure. Obviously it's, this goes without saying. I think everybody's aware of, of Krabby's becoming a, a, an iceberg. That's been very. Very much used with, with a lot of the people in, in the drive-through. So it's, it's good to see. You know. New business being embraced. There's the construction of the, the Byland Retail, which is just north of the, the Dairy Queen. That's, that's getting closer to completion. There is a pizza restaurant that'll be in there. Marco's Pizza. There's two other tenants in that spot, but I don't, nothing's been determined there. But I think those are the main, the main things that are kind of happening. We, we did have an architectural review committee early, earlier this night. If you remember, there was the Orchard Hills Town Home. Second phase. They, they got approval tonight from the ARC and they'll be moving to city council to get preliminary approval, but there are some business. Spaces in that building that will, will have frontage on Highland Drive. They're, they're really small. They're only five to 600 square feet, I think is what the applicant had indicated. So. They're, they're going to be more like little offices or there could be like little incubator type spaces for, for up and coming businesses. Smaller businesses that might be transitioning from like a home occupation type situation. So. Those are, I think, I think those are all the, the, the main businesses that have been new. In the past or, or, you know, relatively new. I, you know, we, we do have a new car wash on Main Street. I, I think Commissioner Nixon could, could tell you about that. Yeah, just, just a lot of, a lot of things happening, a lot of, of growth. I think there is a, I don't know when they're going to open, but I know that there's. Someone who's purchased the old family tree. They're looking to, to have a restaurant in there. For the time being and, and. I think, have they got a business license on that? They're still working on a business license. So, so that, that'll be coming soon. Um, yeah.
Einstein, the Einstein bagel place.
Einstein bagels. So, so the old, I think most people know it as the old taco time. I know it's, it's been a few businesses ago, but. They're just north of the, the Sinclair gas station. That, that space is, is they've done some work there to. Kind of reorient the, the, the drive-through so that they could get a little bit of extra queuing space. But yeah, and Einstein bagels will be moving into that building. That's just.
They open on Friday.
Yeah, so. Yep. Thank you for, for, for that, Norm. I don't want to forget anybody. So yeah, that's a lot of things happening.
You get Chick-fil-A to move in just west of the post office?
We, we would love to do that, but, uh, yeah, that's, uh. We, we need someone to, to, to get a franchise in order to do that. So we, we. we we love seeing new businesses coming to town and we love we love seeing our residents support our existing businesses as well. So yeah, as 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 growth continues to happen, this will will create some 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 growth in in our our commercial areas as well. And and so we're excited to welcome these new businesses, but also excited for for, you know, new growth to to support our existing businesses as well.
Yeah, for sure. Lots of good things happening. Thanks for that. Sorry, go ahead, Art.
Well, is there any update to the Erkenbrack property? It's been a couple of months since we heard anything.
Yeah, we actually met with Mr. Erkenbrack yesterday and he's got somebody who is is interested in the site and we're trying to work out some some of the details that can be memorialized in a in a draft development agreement. He's he's wanting to get get someone on board to kind of help direct how that development agreement needs to be prepared. So yeah, he's he's been working on it, but but he's also been been juggling people that are interested in the property and he wants to mold that development agreement to to somebody who could be purchasing that property and proposing a development. So yeah, I know it's 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 slow going, but but it is making progress and we're we're anxious to see a draft development agreement from from Mr. Erkenbrack so that we can can get that moving forward and taken care of.
Is the city going to plan a official groundbreaking for City Hall?
I'm almost certain that that'll happen. We are 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 finalizing the the floor plans for the building. If you're if you've driven by there, the the couple of homes that the city purchased that are on the corner where the City Hall will go, they've been torn down and so it's it's bare ground there now. Like I say, we're working with the the architect and with the the general contractor on on some of the final changes of the final touches of the the building itself. And we anticipate probably in the next sixty to ninety days, you'll you'll be seeing some work starting out there and I'm yeah, I guarantee that there'll be some sort of a groundbreaking that will happen in conjunction with that.
Thank you.
Can you say anything about how the general plan committee meeting went?
Yeah, that was the one thing I wanted to bring up is I'd like to 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 keep you in the loop and update you on what's happening there. So we had our first and we're calling this general plan update effort Imagine Santaquin with the slogan Growing Together. So we were referring to this committee as the Imagine Santaquin Committee. We had great attendance from from the committee members that were selected by Mayor Hansaker. And we met with the consultant last Thursday and have started to just kind of have broad discussions about the community and what ways that the consultants can can approach this general plan update and give them some ideas of you know, what Santaquin is and what what they'd like to see. Those committee meetings will be happening at least once a month, but most likely twice a month for the entire year. So we appreciate the the committee members who who accepted that that invitation to participate. We've got a very diverse group of people and we appreciate their 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 input and their their very unique perspective on on Santaquin City so that we can really have a collective an effort to to update our plan and have it reflect all the different feelings about Santaquin City and and how Santaquin will will grow in the future. So we had that meeting and we're continuing to meet with the consultant to to give them the information that they need so so that they can move forward. And we'll be, we'll be meeting next Thursday. Actually, I need to inform the committee members. There was a slight change there with with the date because of a conflict someone had, but we're going to be meeting again next Thursday and we're looking forward to continue to to get good input from the the community so that the consultant can 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 continue through this process. We we we're excited with with how things are moving forward.
Great, thanks.
I did have a business owner represent to me today some concern about what's going to happen when the road widens and the loss of sidewalk and accessibility and parking to businesses on Main Street.
So that we've heard a little bit of that as well. To be clear, the road widening that's going to be happening with Main Street, there's not going to be a removal of sidewalk. There's not going to be removal of parking. It's just going to be widening the road and those things will continue to be perpetuated. So what people could refer to is is the the eastern side of Main Street where there are five lanes, two lanes and a turn lane in the middle. That's going to be perpetuated the whole whole way down. And the city has has acquired all the right of way needed for that. We've we've been, we've been getting funding as we go from from Mountainland Association of Governments and the the tip or the the transportation improvement project funding that that is available to all the cities in that that MPO or Metropolitan Planning Organization area. So years ago, the city was able to get funding for the next phase, which is is I believe all the way to one hundred West. And it was about four point five million, if I remember right. And so work on that will will start to commence probably next year. We're starting to think about it and we're trying to to work through some things to make it the most effective and efficient way to do that project because we've we've since, just in the past year, also got funding in in the amount of an additional. I can't remember what it was. It was six or seven million dollars for the next phase, but but that project won't happen for for another three or four years. So we're getting the funding in place and we're doing things to 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 get that widening project done. And it's 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 already been been planned out that that we want to do that project to enhance our Main Street and not take away anything that is there now. So we would probably it wouldn't be with the funding that came along, but we would love to perpetuate the the planner boxes and things like that. It's not necessarily part of the funding that we've we've received. But that sort of look and that that character that that you see on the eastern side of Main Street, that's going to be perpetuated all the way through to five, six hundred West area. There's not a five or six hundred West there yet, but but where a future five or six hundred West would be is is where we're we're trying to to have that widening project moved towards. So yeah, there will be sidewalks and there will be parking. Those things are not going away with this widening project.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else tonight, commissioners?
I just want to tell city staff, thanks again for being amazing. And I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, I will second that. Thanks, staff, and thank you, everyone. And we are adjourned at seven.